Good morning and welcome to July 21st, 2015 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. Before we call the meeting officially to order, we are going to present the invocation and the pledge of allegiance to our country's flag. Today, the invocation will be led by Reverend Tim Lockey, Senior Pastor from East Cobb Presbyterian Church. That will be followed by the pledge of allegiance, which will be led by Officer Mowery. For those who wish to do so, please rise for the invocation and the pledge.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we're grateful to be a community together. We ask for your goodness this morning. We ask for your grace. We ask for unity as a body of people. As a county, we ask for our nation for your blessings and your grace upon it. Lord, give us wisdom as we unite together and work together for the common good of all your children. We pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
(Inhales) I plead the desire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Thank you Reverend. Officer, appreciate you being with us today. We'll now call this meeting officially to order. John, if you would, would you go through our process procedures and then move right into the consent cases?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Today's hearing will be conducted with the following process and procedure. Each case will be called in numerical order. When each case is called, the applicant is requested to stand to signify that they are in attendance. Then we're going to call for any opposition to signify that they are here also, so that they can be counted for the official record. After the counting of the opposition, the applicant and any opposition will be asked to come forward, be sworn in, so they can present testimony to the Board of Commissioners. The applicant will testify first, and then the opposition, if any, will testify second. It's important to note that each side only gets 10 minutes to state their case of concerns. There's not a rebuttal process, there's not a process to reserve your time, so convey all your information to the Board of Commissioners within your 10-minute time period. Additionally, if more than one person wishes to speak on an issue, you might want to coordinate with each other about what you're going to talk about, because each side only gets 10 minutes and you don't want to cover the same information twice. Then after both sides have had their 10-minute presentation period, the Board will start to discuss the matter at hand. From the discussion, they may ask one or more of the speakers to come back to the podium for additional information. After that, the Board will make a decision to either approve, deny, hold, or continue the matter at hand. Mr. Chairman and Board, there are a number of cases on today's printed agenda which have been withdrawn. Rezoning Case Z-33, John Hillis, that case has been withdrawn and will not be heard today. Rezoning Case Z-53, Venkat Sai Tadatori and Priya Hashini Bandaru, that case has been withdrawn and will not be heard today. Additionally, Mr. Chairman, there are three cases that have asked to be withdrawn. Is the applicant here for rezoning Case Z-17, E Rock Development LLC? The applicant is present and they are asking this to be withdrawn without prejudice, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Burrow.
I would make a motion to approve withdrawal on Z-17 without prejudice.
The motion is seconded by Commissioner Hott. Any comments? Call the question. Motion carries four zero.
Second case is rezoning Case Z-56, Kenny Holzer, as receiver on behalf of Skyline Seven Real Estate LLC. They're asking this case to be withdrawn without prejudice, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll bring forward a motion to withdraw without prejudice, Z-56. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? Call the question. Motion carries four zero. Pick a case.
The applicant for rezoning Case Z-65, Frank De Ayers, sent in a letter yesterday asking this case to be withdrawn without prejudice, Mr. Chairman.
Which one is that again?
Z-65, Frank De Ayers.
Commissioner Burrow.
Yes, I would like to make a motion that Z-65 be withdrawn without prejudice.
Motion is seconded by Commissioner Hott. Call the question. Motion carries four zero. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and Board, there are a number of cases on today's printed agenda which have been continued and will not be heard today. First case is rezoning Case Z-86 of 2014, 01 LLC. That case was continued and will be heard at the August zoning hearing. Rezoning Case Z-54, Willie A. Polston Jr., that case was continued and will be heard at the August zoning hearing. Rezoning Case Z-59, Art Frame LLC, that case was continued by the Planning Commission and will be heard at the August zoning hearing. Rezoning Case Z-66, 825 Mars Hill LLC, that case was continued by the staff and will be heard at the August zoning hearing. Rezoning Case Z-67, Black Builders LLC, that case was continued by the Planning Commission and will be heard at the August zoning hearing. Mr. Chairman and Board, there is one case on today's agenda which sent in a letter asking to be continued. It's rezoning Case Z-44, 621 Property Investments LLC. The applicant is present and they are asking it to be continued until your August zoning hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Fisher Weatherford.
Make a motion that Z-44 be continued.
The motion is seconded by Commissioner Hott. Call the question. Motion carries four zero.
I would like to ask the people in today's audience to please turn your cell phones off if you have a cellphone. The ringing does interfere with the broadcast and presentations, so if you have a cellphone, please put it on silent mode. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to start the consent agenda. Cobb County Board of Commissioners zoning hearing consent agenda for July 21st, 2015. Rezoning Case Z-49, Faulty Home Corporation, request rezoning from O-N-I and RM-12 to RMA for the purpose of attached residential in landlots 765, 766, 819, and 820 of the 17th District. The property is located at the northwest intersection of Gilmore Road and Beach Haven Trail, and on the south side of Cumberland Parkway, and on the east side of I-285. Planning Commission recommends approval of Z-49 to the RMA zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. James Bailey dated June 23rd, 2015, including the attached site plan with the following changes to item number one. Second sentence replaced with four-sided brick homes. Item number six, add to the end. Location, type, size of stormwater detention facility to be finalized at plan review. All above-ground detentions must be screened on all sides by evergreens, shrubs, trees, and have a five-foot-tall black-clad chain-link fence installed for security. To item number 13, subset F, add to the end. Any above-ground detention areas must be landscaped and be approved by the County Arbors and the District Commissioner. Item number 15, add to the end, including the location and number of required guest parking spaces. Fire Department comments and recommendations, Water and Sewer Division comments and recommendations, Stormwater Management Division comments and recommendations, Cobb DOT comments and recommendations, and the owner developer to enter into a development agreement pursuant to OCGA 367113 for dedication of system improvements to mitigate traffic concerns. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning Case Z-49? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Just a moment. John, Commissioner Hott?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of changes. There is a new letter which I believe everyone has a copy of, dated July 20th, 2015, and the only change in that letter that you received is an agreement worked out with the fire department. The current layout allows the fire department access out of the apartments just below it, and they worked out in agreement with Rock. Is that correct, Rock? So, I would change where it says "letter of agreeable stipulations" to say "dated July 20th, 2015." The other one is on item number one where it says "three-sided brick homes," and then the Planning Commission changed it to "four." That's not consistent with the letter, so strike number one. Then the final one where it says Cobb DOT comments and recommendations, should say Cobb DOT comments and recommendations, with the exception of the installation of a D-SL lane on Beach Haven. So, those will be the changes.
Okay, DOT is good with that.
My understanding is that they were, it was either way, and some of it, when we talked about the fire, it's kind of for working with the fire department.
Great, thank you. As revised, is the applicant, you okay with that?
Mr. Chairman, I'm fine with that.
Thank you. I'll second, well, that's not part of the motion, okay? As revised, thank you.
Rezoning Case Z-58, Gary Tillman and Alan Kennedy, request rezoning from NRC to LI for the purpose of a contractor's office in Land Lot 299 of the 17th District. The property is located on the west side of Old Concord Road, south of Warner Street, and on the southeast side of Clay Drive. The Planning Commission recommends approval, excuse me, the Planning Commission recommends deletion of Z-58 to the NRC zoning district, subject to the site plan received by the zoning division on April 2nd, 2015, with minor modifications stated herein and final approval by the District Commissioner. Letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Parks Huff dated June 24th, 2015, not otherwise in conflict with the following changes. To item number two, revise second sentence to read all equipment to be stored indoors. Item number three, add to the end. Exhibit A is shown where the blue line is located at the front of the building. Item number four, add to the end. Exhibit A, as indicated by the blue line, two blue circles, the trees, and the green line located at the front of the building for the additional shrubbery. Landscape plan to be approved by the County Arbors and the District Commissioner. Item number nine, revise second sentence to read, and approved by the County Arbors and the District Commissioner. Buffer is indicated by the blue lines at the rear of the building in Exhibit A. Item number 10, add to the end. Incidental storage to be screened from street and neighboring properties. Contractors, contractor office and equipment maintenance use allowed for the applicant's business only. The following NRC uses are prohibited: billiards and pool halls, and designated recycling locations. Yet, the hours of operation are restricted to 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Water and Sewer Division comments and recommendations, not otherwise in conflict. Stormwater Management Division comments and recommendations, not otherwise in conflict. Cobb DOT comments and recommendations, not otherwise in conflict. And the owner developer to enter into a development agreement pursuant to OCGA 367113 for dedication of system improvements to mitigate traffic concerns. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning Case Z-58? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Rezoning Case Z-63, McAllen Capital LLC, request rezoning from R-20 to R-15 for the purpose of a single-family subdivision in Land Lot 552 of the 16th District. The property is located on the west side of Holly Springs Road, south of Frankie Lane. The Planning Commission recommends approval of Z-63 to the R-15 zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Site plan received by the zoning division on April 20th, 2015, with the District Commissioner approving minor modifications. Letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Parks F. Huff dated June 29th, 2015, and July 6th, 2015. Variances permitted as described in the zoning comments and recommendations. Cemetery preservation comments with the District Commissioner approving the final cemetery preservation plan. Water and Sewer Division comments and recommendations. Stormwater Management Division comments and recommendations. And Cobb DOT comments and recommendations. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning Case Z-63?
John, the site plan in my book has Cobb Community Development Agency April 30th date versus the April 20th that you read off. I can't read the date of the plan. Can we just make sure we're on the same page?
Yes, sir.
I only have one site plan, so I'm assuming that that's the right one. I just want to make sure we get the right date.
Mr. Huff, is it the 20th or 30th for the site plan?
It's the one that received April 30th.
Okay, let's change that to the April 30th, 2015.
Commissioner Hott brings this forward. Parks. Yeah, see, I can't read, Parks, okay, you're coming. Parks, Parks, let's go. So, from what I could see, your letter has a site plan that's dated by Gaskins, 4/29/15, and the one received by the Cobb County Community Development Agency zoning also appears to be 4/29/15.
There's a revision date, 6/29, on that, and it's also, it should be, it's the one that's stamped "received the 30th."
Okay, which is the same one that's attached to your letter?
Yeah.
Thank you. So, we'll change that from April 30th, 20th, rather?
To April 30th.
To April 30th.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let the record show there's no one opposed. Rezoning Case Z-64, Michael Hamby, request rezoning.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, I'm sorry. I didn't realize you wanted to make a comment.
Yes, I just would like to say that this piece of property was rather challenging, and I'd like to commend Mr. Huff, the applicant, Mr. Roden, and ECCA and the cemetery preservation members that worked very hard and diligently, and thank them for all their efforts.
Thank you. Sorry, John.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Rezoning Case Z-64, Michael Hamby, request rezoning from R-20 to LI for the purpose of a HVAC office in Land Lot 824 of the 17th District. The property is located at the southwest corner of Church Road and Holland Road. Planning Commission recommends approval of Z-64 to the LI zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Final site plan to be approved by the District Commissioner. Approval of 20-foot front setback from Church Road for the existing building. Way over 50-foot landscape screening buffer adjacent to the residential property to the west, for contractor use only. Appropriately paved and striped parking to be installed with a minimum of five parking spaces. Allowance of variances as contained in the zoning comments. No outside storage of materials. This does not apply to deliveries. Any proposed signage must comply with the Cobb County standards and ordinances. No access to Holland Drive. Access would be on Church Road only, with the design, style, and width of driveway to meet Cobb County standards. Perimeter of the property needs to be appropriately fenced with a six-foot-high chain-link fence. All exterior lighting must be environmentally sensitive. Lighting cannot go outside the property boundary onto the neighbor's property. Fire Department comments and recommendations. Water and Sewer Division comments and recommendations. Stormwater Management Division comments and recommendations. Cobb DOT comments and recommendations, with the exception of the requirement for installation of curb gutter and sidewalks on Holland Drive and Church Road until further development occurs. And the owner developer to enter into a development agreement pursuant to OCGA 367113 for dedication of system improvements to mitigate traffic concerns. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning Case Z-64? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
John, before we go forward, Commissioner Hott, if you would, under the conditions that he just read, the stipulations, the fourth bullet, for this contractor use only, in the event this contractor, this applicant wants to come back with a different contractor, are they to come back to the District Commissioner, or do you want him to come back to other business?
Let's have him come back to the District Commissioner.
Okay.
Because right now, just kind of an explanation of the situation, this is an old church building that can't really be used for a whole lot of anything, and so Mr. Hamby is actually using it for HVAC, so I think that with the improvements that he's going to do for his own business, I don't anticipate seeing anyone else come in here but, and come to the District Commissioner.
Okay, so that'd be revised for this contractor use only. Other use?
Other use to be approved by the District Commissioner.
Okay, you got that, Laura. Thank you.
Thank you. Rezoning Case Z-68, Town Square MB1 LLC, request rezoning from LRC to NRC for the purpose of retail office and restaurant in Land Lots 275 and 296 of the 20th District. The property is located at the southeast intersection of Kennet Saw Du West Road and Du West Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval of Z-68 to the NRC zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Site plan received by the zoning division on May 7th, 2015. Letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Kevin Moore dated July 2nd, 2015, with the following changes. To item number two, add to the list Q grocery store. Fire Department comments and recommendations. Water and Sewer Division comments and recommendations. Stormwater Management Division comments and recommendations. Cobb DOT comments and recommendations. And the owner developer to enter into a development agreement pursuant to OCGA 367113 for dedication of system improvements to mitigate traffic concerns. The applicant representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning Case Z-68? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And moving into, moving on to land use permits on the consent agenda. LUP 19, KCMA Corporation, request a land use permit renewal for the purpose of two temporary storage tents in Land Lot 174 of the 20th District. The property is located at the southwest intersection of Airport Road and Barrett Park Drive. The Planning Commission recommends approval of LUP 19 for 24 months, subject to the site plan received by the zoning division on April 28th, 2015, indicating the location of the two proposed tents with the District Commissioner approving minor modifications. Fire Department comments and recommendations, and Cobb DOT comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 19? Let the record show there's no one opposed. LUP 20, Garfield McCook, request a land use permit renewal for the purpose of a group home in Land Lot 222 of the 20th District. The property is located on the south side of Stylesborough Road, west of Alatuna Lane. The Planning Commission recommends approval of LUP 20 for 24 months, subject to a maximum of six residences. Maintain turnaround capabilities of driveway so vehicles can exit the property frontwards. No exterior signs. Maintain all state and county required permits. Maintain size of lot as it currently exists. Fire Department comments and recommendations, and Cobb DOT comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 20? Let the record show there's no one opposed. LUP 21, Burnt Hickory Church of Christ Incorporated, request a land use permit renewal for the purpose of a daycare facility in Land Lot 291 of the 20th District. The property is located on the north side of Burnt Hickory Road, west of New Salem Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval of LUP 21 for 24 months, subject to the site plan received by the zoning division on May 7th, 2015, with the District Commissioner approving minor modifications. Daycare-related sign to be no larger than three feet by five feet. Cobb DOT comments and recommendations, and Cobb DOT to approve the traffic circulation plan. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 21? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And moving into special land use permits on the consent agenda. SLUP 7, David C. Kirk, on behalf of Verizon Wireless, request a special land use permit for the purpose of expansion of a lease area and co-location of antennas in Land Lot 1061 of the 16th District. The property is located on the west side of Russell Road, south of Summit Village Drive. The Planning Commission recommends approval of SLUP 7, subject to the site plan received by the zoning division on May 6th, 2015, with the District Commissioner approving minor modifications. Landscape plan to be approved by the County Arbors and Cobb DOT comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to SLUP 7? Let the record show there's no one opposed, and that completes the consent agenda.
John, just a minute. Commissioner Hott?
I would just like to add on the landscaping approved by the County Arbors and the District Commissioner. And the reason for that is, as Commissioner is know, with the code amendments, the county is bringing forward some changes that when you change the landscaping around a cell tower, that it has to be brought back to the standard it was before, but since that's not in effect yet, I'm just going to have to get the Commissioner approval.
Perfect. So, that concludes our consent agenda as revised. Commissioners, I'll bring forward a motion to approve the consent agenda as revised. Is there a second?
Second.
Multiple seconds. Call the question. The motion carries four zero. Thanks, let's go, John.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Moving on to the continued case agenda. Rezoning Case Z-47, Robert Neil Castleberry, request rezoning from CF to GC for the purpose of business retail in Land Lot 300 of the 17th District. The property is located at the southwest intersection of South Cobb Drive and Dink Lane. Is the applicant present? Is the applicant here for Z-47? Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning Case Z-47? Mr. Chairman, we'll try to give that applicant a call.
Thank you.
Okay. So, we'll put that on hold right now.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, the next case, Z-61, also has a SLUP with it. Do you want to hear both at once?
Please.
Yes, sir. Rezoning Case Z-61, Blair's Bridge Storage LLC, request rezoning from PVC to LI for the purpose of a self-storage facility in Land Lots 518 and 519 of the 18th District. The property is located on the northeast side of Blair's Bridge Road, north of I-20. Additionally, SLUP 6, Blair's Bridge Storage LLC, request a special land use permit for the purpose of a self-storage facility in Land Lots 518 and 519 of the 18th District. The property is located on the northeast side of Blair's Bridge Road, north of I-20. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to these two cases? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Mr. Moore, good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is John Moore, and I'm here representing the Blair Bridge Storage LLC. This involves a tract that's a little over five acres. It's interesting in that it's divided between Douglas County and Cobb County. Approximately two acres of the tract is located in Cobb County, and three acres is located in Douglas County. What you see on the screen is a property with an aerial photograph that outlines of the property. This triangular piece is the subject property. Next to it across this private road is a motel. It sits behind a shopping center, a Ford dealership, and then other commercial. The property to the rear, located where I'm pointing now, is Walton Reserve, which is a Walton Communities Berry Teague Development. This property is owned by Walton Communities, and they support this application because of its low-intensity use. Just pointing out to everybody what's around there, as far as use is concerned. The original, this two acres remaining in Cobb was originally part of a PVC that the Walton Reserve was zoned to, and that was planned for medical office buildings, and it's been marketed since 2001, when this property was zoned, with no success of getting anybody to come into this area with medical office building. It was felt there's a large senior segment of housing in the Walton Reserve. It was hoped that somebody would take that, but it's been 14 years, I guess, and there's been nobody come forward at all seeking to develop that. Obviously, Walton Communities doesn't do office buildings. We're going to put up the site plan, which we have changed a couple of times. I can point out to you the portion that's Cobb and the portion that is Douglas County. This is north Blair's Bridge Road, right here. Over here to the left of this site plan is Thornton Road, and this runs off Thornton Road. This is the private road. This is the motel we talked about. This is the back of the shopping center and the car dealership. This line that goes diagonally through the property is the county dividing line, and what we, the piece fronting on north Blair's Bridge Road, the three acres, is in Douglas County. And in Douglas County, this is zoned for self-storage. Only thing that's required is a special land use permit like Cobb County requires, so it's already zoned for that use. And what's planned here is a three-story climate control building. And then, this is the Cobb County piece, and these are single-story self-storaged buildings, all brick. And this is Walton Reserve back here, and what we have done is left a 30-foot undisturbed buffer with the back of the brick building being the wall separating the two. There is no access to the rear of either of these two buildings, only the interior. And then, enclosed inside and behind the buildings is parking for RVs and boats only. No other kind of vehicles can be parked there. They'll be completely fenced. This is the security entrance and gate, but this portion of the property along the road front and up will be fenced with wrought iron-type fencing and very attractive. The building that we're proposing to put is a very attractive building that you can see, and it's hard to see in this photograph. This shows you the one-story brick buildings that will be on-site as well, so very attractive, especially if you're driven down into this area and looked at what's around it. This will be by far the most attractive building and development in that area. And I think that we have hearings in Douglas County in August. We wanted to come to Cobb first to go through this, and we would hope that Cobb County would zone this. And we would hope that Cobb County would zone this to allow the self-storage. I might mention to you that under Cobb County's current ordinance, you have to be LI in order to have this kind of storage. That is the one-story type. Whereas before, like 1998, we were allowed to do it under NRC. We did several that had one-story buildings and one on Shallowford Road at Laster. It's been there a long time. It's surrounded on three sides by residential and has never been a problem, never been a complaint. And one at Bob Cox and Dallas Highway, right across from Lake Somerset. It's been there a long time as well, not zoned NRC. And had no complaints with it. In fact, the people at Lake Somerset say that when we worked on that zoning with them, they didn't realize how pleased they were going to be with the result of that because of the low intensity use of it. And it's just a non-factor as to anything that's out there. So we would hope that this could be zoned for one use. I think if it's zoned and allowed for self-storage in Douglas County, as I said, it's already zoned for that, just need a special land use permit to go with it, that this two acres in Cobb remaining would not be developed. I'm not sure what would happen to it. But I just want to make clear that the entire five acres is not part of the PVC. Only the two-acre portion is. This, the principal in this storage facility is Mr. Seamus Burke. Mr. Burke's been in this business for 40 years, probably the best-known builder and developer of self-storage facilities in the South, certainly in the metro Atlanta area. Mr. Burke is here with me this morning and will be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Our stipulation letter dated June the 19th sets forth all the matters which I've talked about with you this morning. And we certainly will ask your approval of this request.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Weatherford, I believe you had a conversation with the district commissioner about this case?
Thank you, sir. Yes, I've done some research on this one and we've, I've talked to planning and zoning as well as the district commissioner. This somewhat unique in that part of it is in Douglas County and, of course, part is in Cobb County. What further complicates it in our minds, in my mind, is the fact that there's a private road that is the only entrance into this two acres in Cobb County, and that private road is through Douglas County. You add to the fact that it is already zoned properly in Douglas County and that it has been unsuccessfully marketed in the category PVC for 14 years. It would seem to me prudent that this particular property go along with the property in Douglas County and allow that to happen since it is landlocked. And I know there was a divided on planning and zoning three to two, but primarily it was because it was zoned PVC. So I feel that we can support this with some stipulations and ready to make a motion when you.
Please, sir.
Thank you. On Z61 as well as SLUP 6, I would like to make a motion to delete. Is that correct to do both or?
Counselor, do you need to vote on each one or can we combine them? Mark?
John rather.
In this case, it sounds like Mr. or Commissioner Weatherford is going to delete it to a different category, so let's have a different motion on each one.
Thank you.
Thank you, sorry, apologize. On Z61, I'd like to make a motion to delete from PVC to the NRZ zoning district and approve the SLUP.
Nope.
Nope, approve the zoning. All right. Subject to the letter from John Moore dated June 19th, site plan received June 19th, the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Any lighting be designed and shielded to reduce off-site light spillage to any adjacent residential zone properties. Subject to sewer and water division comments, recommendations. Stormwater management divisions comments and recommendations. Fire department comments and recommendations and DOT comments and recommendations.
Motion second, Commissioner, you had a comment?
Yeah, Mr. Moore, just a question. Normally when we're looking at self-storage, we don't have outdoor storage. And I notice, I know you mentioned in here that there'll be parking in the center part there for boats and RVs. Since these are one-story, I don't see anything in the letter referencing landscaping. Is there any contingency for landscaping along the northern portion of the property that borders the residential? Because on one-story buildings, RVs and some boats are going to be visible.
There is heavy foliage behind this, in this 30 feet already. We're going to leave that as a natural.
Okay, so should we add a stipulation that says that there'll be, that you're going to leave the 30-foot undisturbed buffer?
Yes.
Or you want to do naturally enhanced?
I think that's fine. I think it's natural is fine because it's heavily wooded now.
Okay, so if we could add a stipulation that the 30-foot buffer will remain, it's an undisturbed natural state.
Correct.
That'd be stipulation number 27.
Good catch.
Okay, thank you.
If the motion is second, any other comments? Call a question. That carries four zero. If you would take up SLUP 6 for us, please.
Would you like me to just go ahead and make a motion?
All right, thank you. I'd like to also make a motion to approve, or I guess proper one, but delete from. To just approve SLUP 6? Okay, is presented.
If the motion is second, any comments? Call the question. Motion carries four zero. Appreciate commissioners' work on getting that project through. So let's move to the next project. Next case, please.
Resoning case Z69, Take 5 Oil Change, request rezoning from GC to NRC for the purpose of light auto repair in land lot 595 of the 16th District. The property is located at the northwest intersection of Pembroke Road and Sandy Plains Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z69? Let the director show there are two people opposed.
Good morning. My name is Scott Stone. I'm with American Engineering, representing Take 5 Oil Change, who is the applicant for this site. We've got a brief presentation to give you an overview of Take 5 and what they do and who they are because it is a, is a very unique, the site is a little bit unique, but the use is a little bit unique as well. Real briefly, this is not a typical automotive facility. They only do oil changes and quick repairs. So oil filter, fluids, and windshield wipers on occasion, that's it. That's all they do. There's no lifts, there's no heavy equipment, there's no anything like that, there's no tires. So it's a very, very unique type of automotive facility. The traffic is, was a concern during planning commission. It's less than most retailers. We'll go into a little more detail on that. It will reduce the traffic compared to the current use. The customers, and this is something that we're going to show you in a second, they always stay in the car. The customers aren't even, aren't actually even allowed to get out of the car. They stay there so they don't drop off the car for any reason. That reduces the need for the parking, although we are going to show that we're, we're meeting the parking requirements. Very environmentally friendly, very advanced systems for managing the fluids, the waste oils, no underground pits, no underground tanks, no hydraulic lifts. There are currently underground storage tanks on the site from the old gas station that was there, and those are going to be removed prior to construction. We are actually reducing dramatically the impervious area. There's, there's essentially no noise from the operations. Sometimes with an automotive facility, you'll see, you'll hear a lot of noise, a lot of, you know, the jacks, the, the air compressors. There is no noise like that in this, in this situation, and it's very, very clean. All right, let me figure it out there. Oops. This is, this is only one minute, literally. We're going to skip the video. Basically, the video was to show you essentially, give you a sense of the car, how they, how clean the facility is, give you a true sense of what happens in that facility. Staff recommends approval for this, and planning commission did not recommend approval. And we've made several changes since planning commission to try to address planning commission's changes, concerns. We were originally requesting five variances, and actually it says we're requesting two now. Actually, we've gone through so many iterations the last couple of days, it's actually four, there are four variances, but they were reduced from what we had originally. First, the, the front setback is required to be 50. We're, we're requesting that it be 40. And I think you've, you've got in front of you the, the latest schematic of the site plan. The rear setback, which is a little bit unique because it's, while it is a rear setback, it also kind of feels like a side setback because it's a corner lot. That is going from 30 to 15 from required to what we're proposing. We had started originally with zero because it's right up, you know, such a tight site. And we were recommending zero. We were able to reconfigure the site to get 15 more feet there, which is going to be significant. The property size requirement of 20,000 square feet, it's such a small site, there's just no way around it. We can't, there, there's nothing that can be done to, to change the size of the site. It's, it's locked all around it. And then the impervious, it's almost 100% impervious right now. We're reducing it to 78%, but we're unable to get it to the, with the parking requirements. We were able to get the parking requirements, which was a concern of planning commission. But it was, we're still 3% over the impervious. We could lose some of the parking, which would be fine for us because we don't need the parking for our customers. But then that would, you know, that would impact the, another variance. It is important to note that we've got, originally when this came to planning commission, it was a four-bay store. And based on the concerns of planning commission and others, we have reduced it to three bays. And so that was a pretty significant change that the applicant had, had agreed to do. Additional landscaping throughout, you'll see that in a couple of the plans we're going to show you. And we're adding a monument in the front, which would be a, a good-looking, attractive monument. And the old monument on the side, if we want to call it a monument, is still sitting there from the old gas station, and that's going to come out, which is basically just a nice store. This is the existing property right now. This is what it looks like today, although there's, there's, often there's a lot more cars than that on the site. This is what it will look like after construction with the three-bay model. You can see a lot more landscaping in the front. You've got a lot of green space there. You've got some significant green space and trees behind, we'll call it behind, but it's to the right of the building there, which is the rear setback. So that makes a big difference. So it'll help screen from the property next door. Traffic was a big issue. So traffic, you know, it's a retailer, so how much traffic will be generated? When you hear automotive use, you just assume it's going to generate a lot of traffic. On it, this is the average traffic from an average Take 5 Oil Change, which they operate throughout the southeast. They have almost 50 stores throughout the southeast. So on a peak, any peak time, you never have more than, you know, approximately seven cars per hour coming into the store. So on average, you've got 50 a day. That's roughly one car coming onto the site about once every 15 minutes. You can't probably find any retailer of any kind. Automotive, you know, restaurants, Starbucks would, would have less than one car per, you know, 15 minutes. So it's a pretty significant reduction for what they have now and for what a lot of the other uses could be for that site. This is the new site plan. The one bullet is wrong, that we meet the side and, and front setbacks, we're off by a little bit on the, on the front setback. We're off by 10 feet. It shows 40 there and it's required to be 50. So big difference, though, from what we present to planning commission is we meet the parking requirements, which is a big difference. If you look at the, the top side there against the, which is essentially the rear setback, you see trees there, which will act as a buffer between the, the property next door and this site. Another big difference, and you'll see it in the next slide, is that, that rear setback, there's also about an eight-foot grade change. So there's also a dramatic visual buffer as well between the two properties. Again, only three bays. We're taking out the USTs. We're, we've got dramatic landscaping improvements, reduced the impervious surface by, by a dramatic amount. We've got stormwater quality measures in place. So it's a, it's definitely a big change from what the previous site plan had shown. Although again, the, the previous site plan had been recommended for approval by staff going into planning commission, and this is an improvement beyond that. The one big issue that seems to remain, and I know that there's some, some opposition to this site from, from the neighbors or the, this property owner, this is what the view is from that rear setback now. And with our changes, you're going to, that canopy, which is pretty high from this view, it'll be more like this. You'll have, the canopy comes down, you've got a much lower, and you've got, again, from this view, you've got an eight-foot drop from this parking level to, to the proposed site's level. So it's a, it's a pretty significant difference, and it should dramatically change the, the view, improve the overall area, reduce the traffic. And, you know, again, that's what you have now, and this is what we're proposing to put in place. We know we have a, there's a couple of folks here that are opposed to the site, but I think it's, it's, I think the argument's going to be hard to make that it's on land use and not on, you know, the next-door neighbor, we'd heard in planning commission actually express some interest in the site themselves. So I think they, you know, we think the land use is, is about as good as we can find for this property, given the reduction in traffic. Any questions for me?
Thank you. Not at this time. Thank you.
Morning, Mr. Commissioner, members of the commission. My name is Ron Skian. I'm the property owner that surrounds this property, both properties. And I'm going to ask that the commission deny this property, the land use on, for the following reasons. This is an unwanted auto-related business. I wouldn't put on Canton Road, which is a comment made that, not by me, but a valid comment. It's, this corner had, between the Walgreens and the property we have up there, we've put a lot of money into changing the look and the feel of this corner, and we have no need for another oil change and emission station sitting in red and white right on the corner. There are already four oil change businesses within 300 yards of this business. It's not something that this community needs and certainly not anything that I need. There are even more emission checking stations. Strike one. Strike two. This space is too small. They ask for and need too many variances. What do we get for our variances? We gave away the 20,000 commercial variance. We gave away, the, the previous speaker identified the four variances that they're asking. And what do we get in exchange? Nothing. They can't make the major road setbacks. Petroleum Realty, who is the owner and will remain the owner of this property irrespective who's using it, is and does have a vagrant tenant there now. By vagrant tenant, in my belief and my judgment. They never asked for a permit. They don't have a, a certificate of occupancy. They never came to this commission, planning, or anybody else to warrant the businesses that they're leasing there now. And what they're trying to do is to make the problems that that business that's there now creates in terms of traffic and this, that, and the other thing, they want to make it permanent for the next 20 years. They're going to sell a lease, they're going to sell a lease, and then they're going to spin off and leave five-minute oil with whatever the problems are, and there are going to be many. They are now in violation of permissible impervious surfaces, and they, they don't offer a plan that's going to correct that problem. And in addition to that, all of the water from our property unfortunately comes out of a weir pawn that we have created 30 years ago and comes out on the sidewalk and pours right into that property. Now, right now, the person who, who runs a cowwash doesn't care when it's raining because he's closed. But you're going to have six inches of water. I mean, it pours. It comes out of a 12-inch pipe and pours right down the sidewalk and into this property. And from Sandy Plains Road, the same thing. It comes down the curb and pours right into the driveway. So we have more than just the impervious surface of this little lot, 13,000 square feet. We have a lot of water coming from the street and from the adjacent property because because it goes from the weirpon into the sidewalk, into the street. That was strike two. Strike three, if I can get my clip off of here. Petroleum Realty has sold the right-of-way on both Sandy Plains and Piedmont Road to Georgia Power. So all of the nice trees that they show on both of those street boundaries, they can't put them in. There's a limit of five or six feet below the Georgia Power line. So, you know, they're showing you a beautiful picture, but it can't happen. Atlanta Gaslight has a right-of-way. They say there are no utility right-of-ways, but there are, if you look into the record. And Georgia Power, Atlanta Gas has one on the wall that's on the left-side property. And they're talking about moving and cutting and increasing that wall, which happens to be the dyke of the weirpon on my side of the property. God knows what happens if it fills up. Strike three. This intersection is already too busy. Sandy Plains Road, the exit of this thing is right in the turn-right lane. And I'm gonna let the current tenant of this property tell you about the traffic issues. But anybody who's zinging into the turn-right lane is faced with people coming out of the property. And when there's three cars in the turn-right lane, which is all it permits, you can't get in and out anyway. So everybody's gonna go around to the Sandy Plains exit. But I'll let him speak to that. The Piedmont Road exit is also in a, in other words, the Piedmont Road exit is, is part of a U-turn and a crossing for schoolkids there. So if you bring what I know to be fifteen or twenty cars a day to sixty or seventy, or whatever they propose, for three bays, it could get three hundred and sixty in five minutes. I mean, that's outrageous. But clearly, they're gonna go up to seventy or eighty cars a day. And, you know, so we're gonna take the problem we have and multiply it times four. You bring a hundred cars a day. You do the math. The risk is too high. The benefit to the county is nil. This particular owner is part of Petroleum Realty in Florida. He really doesn't care about this county. He doesn't live in this county. We don't have to risk the accident and injuries to others to have another oil change station here. Ditto on emissions. We have four in our immediate area. You make and maintain the rules for a reason. And variances should be justified by the neighborhood need, five or so variances. We don't need another red and white eyesore. There are a hundred larger and less congested places to put this oil change business. As a community, my feeling is we could do better than this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Chris Dowell. Actually, I owned that car wash up until October of last year, and I was there for four years. So if anybody can tell you how the traffic is and the flows and the thing, I definitely can. The reason why I got out of it is because it is a nightmare. When, when I first came there, before they did the D O T, it was at least twenty feet out, farther on both sides. And it was still hard to get in and out of. When the D O T'd them and condensed it all in, and right there at the corner of the property, that's where they start the turn lane, you cannot get in or get out. Because when people try to leave, they can't turn, because you, it's strictly, you go right, right, right. There is no left-hand turns, excuse me. There is no left-hand turns there. So we had to set it up so people could go out on the Piedmont side, only go right, because they can't go left, and they had to go down, make a U-turn. They go through Sandy Plains, Sprayberry High School, make a turn to go to the left. Well, the problem is, since that's so condensed, that the exit from the Piedmont side is only fifty feet away from the corner. So when people come around the corner, now, they come around so fast, there's a lot of accidents. When people try to make a U-turn to come in, there's a lot of accidents. I got to where I knew the police officers very well. I called nine-one-one at least ten to twelve times a year because of accidents and there. If you get more than ten cars on that parking lot, and we're bigger now, and there's more spaces than what they're proposing, you can't move them. You can't back up. You can't go forward. And the way they're showing it on the screen, how they're coming in off Sandy Plains and they move right in, that is right up against the entrance. It's right up against it. So if you have more than one or two or three cars coming, it stops. That's it. The cars go out there in Sandy Plains, because I used to go, and I would be a traffic cop. And I'd stand there and move them and move this and try to move the cars around, because it jams up. And the same thing when you go onto the Piedmont side, when they make U-turns and when they try to come in, people can only go out the Piedmont way, and there would be collisions. People would turn coming around the corner too fast, people was trying to make U-turns too fast, and it was constantly collisions. And as far as the, excuse me, but as far as the, this is a watershed. When they put those islands in, it condensed all the water. And being a, in a car wash, we're closed during the rain time, but I did my paperwork. All that water would come down Sandy Plains, and all that water would come down into, from Piedmont. But guess where it goes? It's open area on, on the entrances. And it would just rush right in there, and it would be two to three inches of water sitting in there. And it just flood the whole thing up in there. So if they're saying that they're gonna have above oil change, and they're gonna have above this and that, it's gonna flood it. I'm telling you that right now, because there's no other place for that water to go. And the, and the way they've got it set up, when I looked at their pictures there, and they showed, the first picture, when they said, well, it's more busy. If you notice, there was a cone there. The reason the cone is there is because it's a blind spot. And those three telephone posts that are right there on the corner, people cannot see that entrance until they're on it. And then they slam on the brakes to turn, and then they get hit in the rear end.
Thank you, sir. Your time has expired.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Commissioner Burrow.
This is a, a very challenging site. And as was mentioned in planning commission, the, not just the vehicle traffic and the short right turn lane backing up into the straight lane on, on the Sandy Plains side. There's a lot of foot traffic and pedestrian traffic in this area as well, with Sprayberry across the street and, you know, the commercial shopping center where Chick-fil-A and Walgreens and, and all four corners. And I, I wish the video had played, because I, I do like the concept where you don't have to leave your car. And I think, you know, that's a, a unique con- Yeah, yeah, I received it. I just, I thought you were gonna show it publicly. But it, it is a good concept, but I don't, I don't see it fitting on this corner. It's too tight, it's too small, and there are way too many variances. Even though the impervious is way over now, you know, I think through the years with the, in intersection improvements that we've recently made on that corner, it's, it's cut off a lot of the space within. And I, I think with the traffic, the stormwater management issues, I just can't support it.
I'm gonna present a motion, please.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to deny Z sixty-nine.
There's a motion and a second, but Commissioner, any other comments? Call the question. Motion carries four-zero. Thank you. That takes us to other business, correct?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. And I did get word during a hearing that the applicant for Z forty-seven, Robert Neil Casbury, they need to continue that case, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Now, I'll bring back, I'll bring forward a motion for Z forty-seven. Do we continue that case? Is there a second? There's a second, but Commissioner, any comments? Call the question. Motion carries four-zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want me to start? Okay. Mr. Peterson, will you proceed, please?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Item number twenty-seven on today's other business agenda is to consider a site plan and stipulation amendment for Barnes Mill V D L L C regarding rezoning application Z forty-four two thousand and two for property located on the eastern side of Wright Road and on the southern side of Poplar Springs Road, landlot two-twenty-seven and two-ninety-two of the nineteenth district. The subject property was rezoned to R thirty O C for thirty-six lot subdivision in two thousand and three. At that time, the subdivision entrance was shown on the north side of the property, across from Bridge Creek subdivision. The applicant would like to move their proposed entrance to the west side of the property in order to meet site dis requirements for the project. All other aspects about the project, including the number of lots and the amount of open space, will remain the same. If approved, all previous conditions would remain in effect. The staff would ask the board of commissioners to conduct a public hearing and consider the proposed site plan and stipulation amendment. Is there anyone here opposed to this item? The director shows no opposed.
Okay. What's your recommendation?
Madam Chair, the staff's recommendation is to approve this subject to the site plan received by the zoning division on June sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications and all previous conditions not in conflict.
Okay. Commissioner Rock?
Ms. White.
Oh, I'm sorry. I saw burn to, Commissioner Weatherford.
Thank you. Make a motion to approve O B O twenty-seven as presented.
Second.
With previous stipulations.
And to remain in effect.
Yeah, remain in effect, yes.
Call a question. Motion carries three-zero.
Item number twenty-eight on today's agenda is to consider amending the zoning stipulations for Del Taco L C regarding zoning application number fifty-two of nineteen eighty-eight for property located on the northern side of Roswell Road, east of Johnson Ferry Road, the landlots eight-twenty-nine, eight-thirty, eight-ninety-nine, and nine-hundred of the sixteenth district. By way back, our subject property was rezoned, planned shopping center in nineteen eighty-eight, in order to amend some of the previous stipulations regarding signage from the original nineteen seventy-seven zoning. In particular, the property was restricted in nineteen eighty-eight to one sign on Roswell Road and one sign on Johnson Ferry Road. The applicant is requesting the stipulation to be amended to allow one more sign on Roswell Road. The applicant is redeveloping the property as a Del Taco restaurant. And the property current, the property formerly had a T C B Y store that did have its own monument-based sign or freestanding sign on Roswell Road. Attached to the other business item are the sign renderings in the site plan. The proposed sign does meet the sign code, and if approved, all previous conditions would remain in effect. The staff would ask the board of commissioners to conduct a public hearing to consider the proposed stipulation amendment.
Thank you. We'll open a public hearing for other business item number twenty-eighth. Anyone with speaking for or against, please come forward. Mr. Moore.
Good morning. Kevin Moore here on behalf of the owner and applicant. This particular application for a zoning stipulation change deals with the signage for the Del Taco. This particular shopping center, the Del Taco location, is actually part of the overall shopping center property. It's not an out parcel like you might see in other locations or other setups for shopping center and out parcel locations. This is at Roswell Road with, and also has frontage on Johnson Ferry Road. Commissioner, I'll give her one. I've got, I've got the new one for her as well. The issue comes with the fact that it was rezoned initially back in the late seventies and then again in the mid-eighties to clarify signage. However, when the T C B Y that went in this location went in, it put a separate sign. There's a T C B Y sign. It's actually a pole sign out on Roswell Road now. If you're familiar with that area, you've seen that sign and gotten used to it. But actually, that sign in and of itself should never have been permitted and shouldn't have been in that location at the time. Del Taco took over the T C B Y location. They would like to have signage. It's very important for that particular area so that their place of business can, you know, can be found and noticed from that standpoint. So they proposed a, a new monument sign that would be in conformance with all Cobb County sign ordinances and regulations. That sign is sitting on your screen now. The discussions we've had with E C C A, the original sign had a black monument base. They requested that the monument base be brick or stone with some additional types of landscaping around the base of it. And so we were able to get this together fairly quickly and provide a stone base with the additional landscaping flower and shrubs that you see there to beautify. And we have provided that to them. I'm gonna provide a copy of what's on your screen to the clerk. And so it would, this request would be subject to the sign you see there, which is part of their normal sign package, which would have to be permitted and built. With that, we would request your, and respectfully request your approval of this other business item so they can be allowed to have this sign. I'd advertise their business in this location.
Thank you, sir. I believe there's another speaker that would like to talk to us.
Yes.
Can we let her do that?
She's more than welcome to.
Harvey?
She's more than welcome to.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Jill Flamm, and I'm the case manager for East Cobb Civic Association on this other business item. We have no problem with the request. We also would like to get down the ice cream cone. However, we have requested several stipulations that were received late last night. The applicant has come forward with a base of the sign that's stacked stone. Originally, we requested that. Their, E C C A has input on that and the landscaping. We approve of the stacked stone and the landscaping, but ask that the district commissioner be given enough time to take a look at it, since it came in late last night. The other item is, we would request that the property owner agree to enter into a pedestrian lighting district per the Johnson Ferry Urban Design Guideline, should one be established in the future via the stipulation. This property borders on Johnson Ferry and Roswell, and in the future, we'd like to see a unified pedestrian lighting district. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak? The public hearing is closed, Commissioner. What did, well, actually, let's go back to, so you're John, right?
Yes, sir.
Go back to John. What is staff's recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, the staff would recommend the board of commissioners approve the request, subject to the allowing two freestanding signs on Roswell Road, subject to the site plan as shown on, on exhibit one, page one. And subject to the sign rendering that was presented at today's hearing for the monument-based sign.
Commissioner Rock?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John, just a quick question. I mean, in the application that we have in our books, there's a whole lot of signs. All their signs are in compliance with the sign code?
Yes, and all we're-
And all we're, all we're looking at?
Is the one extra monument-based sign on Roswell.
Right. So all that other stuff was in there, was really, right, okay. That's what I thought. And can you comment on Ms. Flamm's request about the pedestrian lighting district? Is that something that I can ask Mr. Moore about, or is that really kind of out of the bounds of what we're doing?
It should be related to the request, and I'll defer to the county attorney. You know, I'm thinking probably not, since it's not related to the sign.
That's what I was thinking too, because it's not really, we're not really rezoning the property. We're just dealing with the sign, right?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. I make a motion to approve other business item number twenty-eight as presented, with all the staff comments and recommendations and all the previous stipulations and conditions to remain in effect, not otherwise in conflict.
Second.
To include that sign, right? Okay. Thank you. All righty. Is the motion a second? Call the question. Mary, it ca, what is it, four-zero passes. Thank you. Twenty-nine.
Thank you. Item number twenty-nine is to consider amending the zoning stipulations for Palladium Inc. regarding rezoning application Z fifty-one, two thousand and seven. The property is located on the north side of Sandy Plains Road, west of Scufflegrit Road, the landlot seven-seventy-eight of the sixteenth district. The subject property was rezoned to R A five for a fourteen lot subdivision in two thousand and seven. The applicant is currently developing a subdivision and needs to amend the condition regarding architecture of the houses. The applicant would like to delete stipulation number six and insert language that reads, additionally, the fronts of the proposed residences should be brick, stone, stacked stone, shake, stucco, or combinations thereof. Fiber cement siding, i.e. hardy plank type, may be used on the sides and rear. And as an accent on the front, vinyl siding- type may be used on the sides and rear, and as an accent on the front, vinyl siding shall be, not be used. The proposed change in architecture would still be consistent with the area, including the homes in the adjoining subdivisions. If approved, all previous conditions would remain, would remain in effect. We'd ask the board of commissioners to conduct a public hearing to consider the proposed stipulation amendment.
Thank you. We'll open up the public hearing for other business item number 29. Anyone wishing to speak? For or against, come forward. Craig, you want to talk?
If it would be, it would be helpful.
I don't think so. Public hearing is closed. Commissioner Burrow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Craig, if you would like to say a few words, you're more than welcome, but-
Soon as the meeting's over.
I'm going to, yeah. I do want to see you after the meeting. The applicant has a similar subdivision within the same area on Renfro Street. And I went to visit and look at the houses there to see what the frontage, the front architectural style was and that they are in keeping with the surrounding neighborhoods on Sandy Plains. And I think this would be a good fit. So I would make a motion to approve the change in the language for item number six with all other stipulations to remain in effect.
Motion is a second by Commissioner, right? Any comments? Call the question. The motion carries four zero. I believe that concludes our consent agenda, or I mean, our other business agenda. And that concludes our zoning meeting.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Without objection, we are adjourned.